Item 9B.[6.89][6.89](laughter) Receive oral presentation on issues and response related to homelessness in San Bruno.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am here this evening to talk to you about the issues and concerns regarding homelessness, as well as the city's response and what we do to address this issue. So, why are we here? Why are we having this discussion? As we know, homelessness is a national, statewide, and regional issue that's not unique to our city. However, we often receive inquiries, both council and staff, regarding what our approach is to deal with this problem. And it's productive to regularly look at how we address certain issues, including homelessness, and reevaluate whether there's more we can do, or if there are other options out there that we can employ that may be more effective. And finally, we're directed to by the council, so we're here to talk to you. So, issues, the big, broad issues, to get things started, I think we need to begin with the premise that although you're receiving this report from somebody wearing a uniform, being homeless in itself is not a crime. There's no way to enforce or enact any local or state ordinance that is going to simply remedy this issue. There are associated issues with homelessness, as we've learned. Those do include, just to name a few, mental health concerns, substance abuse, and for some, it's, we're dealing with a situation where it's a lifestyle choice, or individuals are resistant to the services that we are encouraging or offering to provide them. Sometimes, we're simply dealing with limited resources. This is especially true at the local municipal level. And there's a perception or expectation out there amongst individuals that may not be familiar with the approach that the city takes, that it's our responsibility to educate and inform them. So, that's, those are a few of the reasons why we're here this evening. So, if we look at why we're dealing with, what we're dealing with, or not just specific to San Bruno, but contributing factors to homelessness in general, we can differentiate those from some of the situations that we have here. And if we look at San Bruno specifically, and ask ourselves why there are homeless individuals who prefer to frequent our city, we can look at a couple, or a few factors. The first of those is availability and proximity to resources. There are a number of resources, both in San Bruno and the immediate surrounding areas, for individuals that are transient. And while it's important, and nothing could be more important than providing for others and to make sure that people are well cared for and their needs are addressed, we also have to realize that the manner and location in which resources are provided is going to influence or dictate where we see transient individuals congregate or frequent. We're also, we pride ourselves on being a transportation hub. We have, there's plenty of ways to get to and from San Bruno. Public transportation is very available here, and that contributes to access to our city. And then, many of the individuals we encounter living on the street or have some type of connection to the city and are comfortable here. We have a fairly mild climate. The city police department provides itself on being relatively safe, and individuals are not as susceptible to violent crime as they may be in a bigger, larger metropolitan So, I'm going to show you a brief clip of a body camera, body camera footage that actually I was wearing last week. This is right outside the police department near the BART station, and it's just a brief few seconds, but I'd just like to preface it by, you know, when the police department, as I'll mention later on, the police department interact with homeless individuals on a regular basis, both in a proactive manner and in response to calls for service. In this instance, you can see the windows behind, those are police department offices, and it's really not a good idea to do illegal stuff right outside the police department windows, but they're mirrored windows, so not everybody realizes that. So, on this particular day last week, we saw folks that were, that may have been involved in activity that may have not been legal, so we walked outside and began to talk to them. And there's a couple different conversations going on here, so it's going to be a little bit hard to hear or understand, and I'm going to put the microphone down to the speaker because that's about as technologically advanced as I get. But you'll hear me ask an individual, "Hey, what's the deal? Why San Bruno? Why are people coming here?" And the quote is written up there. You're going to hear this response is probably because it's like the perfect balance of resources and comfortability, you know? And you articulate a comfortability pretty good, and I needed to practice that word tonight a couple times before I came here. So, I'm going to, I'm going to play a little clip for you. There are a couple individuals that we're dealing with. I happen to be talking to somebody who's not on camera, so that's why there's two conversations that are overlapping. Hopefully, you can distinguish my unique voice as I'm talking to one of the folks that we're interacting with. How come everybody's coming here? San Bruno, Woodston.
I have no idea, but you're in the public because it's like the perfect balance of resources.
So, your bikes are all getting taken care of?
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure whether you could make that out, but the individual I'm talking to is basically that quote. Sergeant Windell's talking to somebody else about his bicycle to make sure we secure his property, but I'm having a conversation with his friend and trying to figure out why here, and that's the response that we received. So, moving forward with why we're, or maybe some contributing factors to why we find ourselves with individuals who prefer San Bruno, homeless individuals who prefer San Bruno, there's a connection to the city in many cases. Most of our long-term, regular homeless individuals, the vast majority of them, have some connection to San Bruno. They grew up here, they have family here, they've lived here for an extended period of time, and they're comfortable here, and they consider this to be home. And if you have the conversations with them, that's the response you're going to hear. I'll go back for a second, I just don't want to be distracted by the numbers. In a subsequent slide, I believe you'll see that those who do not have those connections here, we typically see them only for a brief period of time. For example, I followed up with the individual we're dealing here, and they were from the Central Valley, and we're trying to make their way back to the Central Valley, and we haven't seen them since last week. We kind of helped them and facilitated them a way to get where they needed to go, and we see that a lot, but there is an effective avenue of communication amongst people who are seeking services, and they know that they're available here. So, the next slide is the 2017 San Mateo County Homeless Census. The county conducts a homeless census every other year, so the next one will be scheduled in 2019. And you'll see the numbers there, and the subsequent slide will try to explain these numbers. They're difficult to explain. There is a great fluctuation, not just in our city, but in several surrounding cities, and we'll try to go through that in the subsequent slide here. The county likes to point out, as I would, that, you know, if you look at the numbers in the census, that there is a gradual decline in homelessness between 2015 and 2017 of 16 percent. The percentage of homeless individuals countywide that were counted in the city of San Bruno comprised 4.1 percent of the county's total homeless population, and our actual population makes up 5.7 percent, so you can see the proportionality there. However, there's a significant fluctuation in the numbers. There is a wide range of, from year to, from every other year, census to census, that is a drastic shift. This may reflect that, you know, homeless individuals are transitory, and they, it may be a fluid situation, or it may be a situation where the census is conducted in a unique manner every other year, and it may bring into question the credibility of those numbers, because there is such a drastic shift. Based on our individuals in the field and the work that we do with some of our partners, we believe the number of regular homeless individuals in the city to be around 40. So, when we talk about existing services, we do have one primary area that seems to attract homeless individuals, a place that does great work, provides valuable resources to people that really need them, and that is the Catholic Worker Hospitality House at San Bruno Church. As you can see there, there's nine shelter beds there that can accommodate folks for a couple weeks, two to three weeks. The gathering port or congregating point, you'll notice, is five days a week, they're feeding breakfast and providing showers to individuals that need them. They estimate that they provide these meals and showers to between 60 and 90 guests. Now, not all 60 and 90 of these individuals are homeless, or homeless in a traditional way that, the way we receive calls for service. They may be individuals who truly need these services, but don't experience the same shelter challenges that the individuals we see actually sleeping on the street are experiencing. They also have a couple homes in the city. One is a supportive temporary housing, single-family home, and has five bedrooms, and each bedroom is basically designated for somebody who needs sheltering services. So, it's more of an individualized, temporary, transient type of environment there. The second home is another single-family home designated for a family that needs or requires some housing assistance, and they try to do that in a very affordable, in a very affordable manner, to provide some sustained housing for a family to use that resource. This is just a partial list, and this will be relevant in just a second, but this is just a partial list of phone numbers when we have challenges seeking services that are at our disposal from the city's perspective. And I won't go through them all, but that list is probably, that's probably a third of the list that we have available to us. Our primary partner in, when we talk about local resources, is Life Moves. Life Moves was formerly known as the In Vision Network, for those of you who may have heard that term. Life Moves is a program that, it's a model that combines shelter and housing with comprehensive services, a case work type of approach, that will enable homeless families and individuals to return to long-term, self-sufficient housing. The county has a contract with Life Moves. Frankly, we weren't satisfied with the contract. We loved what Life Moves did, but they're spread too thin, like everybody else is. So, we partnered with a couple of the cities when we were confronted with some one-time grant funding, and at the council's approval, we enhanced our relationship with Life Moves so they could do more for us in the city. So, that's where we're at now, working with them to do that. The reason we like Life Moves, as opposed, there's a lot of service providers, there's a lot of service providers that provide services independently in San Bruno. The reason we like Life Moves is because of the goal, and the goal is one that is a long-term, sustainable, sheltering resource or sheltering solution to individuals who are living on the street, as opposed to some of the other groups that do, that are excellent at providing services, but their focus and goal is more on just simply providing the services with no end game, with no focus or emphasis on getting folks off the street, seeking long-term housing or sustainable solutions to this problem. Right now, Life Moves, in conjunction with the police department primarily, but also with some other city departments, is working closely with 20 to 25 of the individuals that we see regularly on the streets of San Bruno. Most of these subjects are resistant to services. Sometimes, it takes a long time, and I'll let them speak to this in a second, it takes a long time to build that relationship, build the trust for an individual to accept services and move forward in the process to really seek a long-term solution to a serious problem. There's approximately eight individuals, and these numbers may have changed, they're about a week or so old, that we're actively working with in an intense manner that seemed to be agreeable to services, that we're working with now to try to pull the trigger on that. Just one quick story, based on the relationship here. A couple Saturdays ago, I happened to be at the police department where an individual, you could tell this person was down on their luck, they had shown up at the police department seeking help. He had recently ended a long-term relationship, lost a job, and had been living in a local motel until his funds had simply run out, and was kind of in dire straits and needed help. We called all of those numbers you saw on a previous slide, and it was difficult to find resources on a Saturday afternoon, to be honest. It was difficult to find a bed, difficult to help this person out, who was standing in the front lobby of the police department. Because of our relationship with Life Moves, I was able to pick up my cell phone, call Mark Saban from Life Moves on his cell phone. He called me back within 15, 20 minutes, located a bed in Redwood City. A San Bruno police officer drove this person down to Redwood City, and we were able to at least give this subject a chance. He had three or four days in a shelter down there where they could provide him with the resources, provide him with opportunities to kind of help his situation. So, that's the basis of what we do, and we'll talk about its effectiveness in a few minutes, but I wanted to give Sherri Campbell and our Life Moves representatives a chance to kind of talk a little bit about what they do on a regular basis. I do want to point out that, for those of you that know Sherri, this is not her primary job or role. She's pulled in a million different directions within the police department in responding to homeless concerns, which she's a great resource for the officers, because they can let Sherri know, let Life Moves know, and it kind of relieves their burden of dealing with things, because she has the connections. But I just do want to point out before they get started that this is not her primary role. She has countless other roles, so it's a difficult challenge for her. She does a great job at it, but it is just one of many things that she's responsible for. So, Sherri, do you and Joaquin want to say a few words?
Hi, good evening. So, I'm Sherri Campbell, and I'm the Support Services Officer with San Bruno PD, and like he was saying, one of the roles in my job is trying to assist our homeless subjects. Typically, what happens is our patrol officers are kind of the first person to go out when we do get a call related to a homeless individual. They go out and handle that call depending on what it is. Sometimes, the person can get arrested, or be cited, or simply just be moved along. When it's a person that we deal with repetitively, the patrol officers will get ahold of me, they'll come see me in my office, or email me, and let me know that there's someone that is either refusing the services that they've tried to offer, or somebody who may want services. Depending on what the situation is, I'll always go out and make contact personally, and try to just talk to them and see what the issues are. Sometimes, there's some type of addiction, sometimes they're just down on their luck, other times there might be mental health. So, a part of my evaluation is trying to figure out what the proper connection is. I have a lot of resources, but it's a matter of what they're willing to accept. One of those resources, which is huge, is Life Moves, which is what the chief had just talked about. It's one of our primary resources to help the homeless individual. So, when I am going to go out, whether it's a camp that we're about to evict, or just somebody I want to make contact with, I call Life Moves, and then we go out and contact them together. So, I'm going to turn it over to Joaquin, which is our City of San Bruno Outreach Case Manager with Life Moves, and then he's going to tell you a little bit about what he does, and then I think he's going to give you a very recent success story.
Perfect. Hi, everybody, my name's Joaquin. I'm the Outreach Case Manager for San Bruno at the moment, and the main focus of our task is to engage the clients, and those, like Sherri said, those who are repetitive encounters with the law enforcement are those who are long-term homeless individuals in the city of San Bruno. And these are the hardest clients to engage, and actually engage them in services, because they've been out in the streets for so long that, to them, it's now a routine, it's a system, and so when we approach them to offer them services, we have various entities who care about this individuals, who want to offer them services. Sherri is the first point of contact when these individuals are repetitive contact, and what she does is she'll contact me and refer the clients to me. She'll provide a description, she'll provide a location of where they tend to hang out, and then our goal is to come out and meet the client and engage them in services. Again, these are some of the most difficult clients, because they've been out in the streets for the longest. It takes a lot of engagements and a lot of report, and building rapport with the client. One of the most recent experiences I've had with a client is an elderly lady. She's been living in the streets of San Bruno for two years straight, in her car. She was parking at the town center parking lot. It took about a year and a half until she finally agreed to engage in the services. And her growth and decision to actually engage in services was dealing with mental health and behavioral health. And I try my best to engage her and want her connected to those services, but it wasn't until she decided to do it on her own. And she came up to me and said, "Joaquin, I finally did it. I went in, I connected with services." She is now on the verge to get in house. She signed her lease yesterday, and it's a waverly apartment in Redwood City. It is a mental health and behavioral health apartment complex that they're going to be receiving ongoing case management, and she's going to be moving in on the 31st of this month, so I'm really happy for her. And it's just an ongoing process, and it's not cookie cutter, where you can know how long a client will go through the process. Some clients can take five months, two weeks, some can take up to two years. It all depends, the motivation and what they want to do, and if they want to engage in the services.
Thank you, thank you. So, moving forward, as we mentioned earlier, homeless is not a criminal justice or law enforcement issue, it's much more universal. So, it impacts more than the police department. Although I'm here talking before you, this presentation is a collaborative effort, and a lot of the information you're going to see in the slides was provided by other city departments, and it does touch a few departments within the city. For example, this is the feedback that we received from code enforcement. I'd like to thank them for providing this, but their experience is they've received fewer complaints related to homeless in the past year. They play a role in creating an environment that is less inclined to make folks comfortable in areas, in public areas. In, for example, they've addressed vacant properties. The First National Bank Building, which is gone now, it was fenced off, and it's still fenced off. Historically, we had a problem there with homeless individuals, and when they took that action, we no longer experienced that, the same with 500 Sylvan site. And they can also, through planning, create space that would make it, I don't know, less convenient or less comfortable for individuals who are looking to just loiter in an area through lighting, through planning, through an ergonomic design. They play a huge role in addressing those issues, and if we keep that consideration in our planning mind, hopefully it'll have an impact moving forward. Community Services and Public Works also plays a role. Oftentimes, our community services staff in the parks and in areas where they're responsible for maintaining are the first to locate homeless individuals, and they'll immediately give Sherri a call or call the police department and give us a heads-up on where folks are so we can try to get out in front of that before it becomes a larger issue. They also play a crucial role in keeping vegetation and trees cut back, which reduces the opportunity for folks to kind of have that hidden sanctuary where they may want to set up an encampment, and can do so kind of out of sight, out of mind, until it becomes too late. Public Works plays kind of a big role for us. When we encounter homeless individuals who may have a warrant for their rest, or for whatever reason, they may need to go to the hospital, or whatever it is, we need to do something with their property, and oftentimes, it's a significant amount of property. Public Works is tasked with storing that property for up to 90 days, and they do a good job, even though their space is very limited and it can become challenging. And finally, there's the police department. We seem, we, for obvious reasons, interact with transient individuals on probably the most regular basis of all city staff. We regularly respond to calls from residents, asking to check on the well-being of individuals who appear homeless. We regularly respond to complaints about why we're not just simply forcing people off the street, or forcing people to accept services, accept assistance. As we mentioned earlier, we work closely with Life Moves, and one of the things that was not mentioned, and they do so much, it's hard to mention everything, but on a monthly basis, they have a multidisciplinary team, which brings all the service providers, all the relevant service providers together, and on a case-by-case basis, they go through each identified homeless person in San Bruno, the status of that homeless individual, what resources have been offered, where there's been successes, where there's been challenges. So, each person that has been identified as being transient is being addressed. We also facilitate the eviction process for homeless encampments. This can be a little bit more complicated than folks may realize. We need to give a 72-hour notice for individuals that have established a homeless encampment by law. It's an eviction, just like you would evict somebody from anywhere else. The number of 72 hours, if it's city property, it's usually fairly swift. We have the authority to do that. Sherri's excellent at that and jumping on that. We have a lot, we have a lot of other stakeholders or property owners in the city that are public entities, include BART, the airport, San Francisco PUC, Caltrans. Sometimes, it's a little bit more time-consuming just to get that eviction notice posted when we're dealing with those external entities. Most of them, all of them are much larger than us, we're dealing with large bureaucracies, and once we get the notice posted, it sets everything into motion rather quickly, but sometimes people become a little frustrated because we haven't initiated that eviction process, and oftentimes, we're waiting on an external partner to help us do that, because it's their land. We also enforce state statutes and city ordinances when applicable. We do this in a manner that is not targeted at homeless individuals. The same statutes that we enforce in the downtown area, for example, would be the same statutes we'd enforce if anybody had committed that violation. So, we're very careful to make sure that we are not targeting any one group, and that our enforcement of all statutes, state and local, are conducted in an equitable manner. So, as mentioned earlier, we encounter homeless individuals on a daily basis. Many of those instances are as a result of a call for service. Many of those instances are proactive, where officers see that, hey, there's a problem here, we need to ask these people to move along, and we continually are asking folks to move along when they're in areas that pose, that we know or will anticipate will pose a problem wherever they happen to be loitering. We also have occasion to arrest homeless individuals who are living on the street, and as I mentioned earlier, the arrests we make with these individuals are the arrests we would make for anybody that we would find in the same area. But some of the violations that we typically encounter are drug possession, open container, possession of drug paraphernalia, public intoxication, theft, trespassing, assaults, all that stuff. We also make a lot of arrests of homeless individuals pursuant to arrest warrants, and the reason for this is the vast majority of the violations that I've just mentioned and many more are misdemeanor crimes. And the way that the law reads now, and it has for some time, but the way that felonies have been reclassified to misdemeanors, all we can really do when we arrest these individuals is request that they sign a promise to appear in court, give them a court date, and they are released on a citation. Typically, because they have transportation challenges and they have challenges getting to court, they will miss their court date, it will result in an arrest warrant, and then we'll make that arrest, and they'll have to go, then they'll be physically arrested. Typically, though, because they're only arrested on a misdemeanor arrest warrant, they make their court appearance the following day, and they're usually released, because there's no cause to hold them. And then, outside of the whole criminal element, we mentioned that there are mental health challenges associated with some of these individuals, and we do encounter those, and when somebody presents themselves to be a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or gravely disabled, we will and can command that they are transported to a local hospital for a mental health evaluation. They can be held for up to 72 hours initially, unless medical professionals seek a longer order, but a police officer can make that determination and send them to the hospital. Typically, they're not held for 72 hours, it's typically a six-to-eight hour turnaround before we see them back on the street. The note on the, and I know I keep repeating this, but it's important to know that we do conscientiously treat and interact and enforce ordinances and conduct evaluations of homeless individuals in the same manner that we would do for any other individual that we'd encounter, no matter what part of the city that we're talking about. Legal considerations and constraints. Our city attorney's not here tonight, but we have council, and he provided me with this information, so thank you to him. But as mentioned before, courts have identified or stated that cities are not allowed to criminalize the homeless. Society's pretty much come to the same conclusion. This includes not only establishing ordinances aimed at behavior we see associated with homeless, for example, if we don't like what the homelessnessers are doing, we're prohibited from establishing ordinances specifically to target that behavior. It also addresses the enforcement of existing ordinances in a manner that is disproportionate and aimed at the homeless population, so we have to be very careful there. So, that's pretty much it. If we go outside of these constraints or considerations, there is the potential, and other cities have seen some liability associated with that. So, are we seeing results? As I've described, this is As I've described, this is a collective and ongoing effort, many different groups are involved in addressing it, it's not just the police department. In working with Life Moves, we've, over the last, I think it's, over the last year, we've found housing resources for 14 individuals. It's pretty good, it's a pretty good number. Are we having an impact on the community? I don't know, it's hard to measure. It depends on who you talk to, it depends on what part of the city you are in, and I guess it depends on your perspective. So, that's something that I don't have a solid answer for you. As I mentioned at the outset, we look at what others are doing to see if we can learn. And these are some programs, I'm not going to go through each one, but you can see them up there of some branding or some names that some other jurisdictions have gone through. Most of them are providing housing resources, mental health resources, social service resources, the same types of things that we do as a city and with our county partners. Within these two slides, there's only two areas that we have not gone to as a city or as a county. And one is, on the first slide, there is tiny homes. That's been the subject of conversation, you may have seen it in the news. Oakland is now employing the tough shed homes, I think they're called, that you could, that's similar to the sheds that you see that are sold at like a Home Depot type store. And then, the second area that we don't really have a formal program for is reentry programs for those that are coming out of custody. Those are typically individuals who have served extended periods of time in state prison and then are being released into, back to the community and may not have a place to live. We don't run into that a heck of a lot. Most of our homeless individuals that we see are doing short stints in the county jail based on what they're doing in San Bruno rather than coming out of a long-term prison sentences. But as you can see of the other options, we're doing almost all of that. The one area that's being done in other parts of the county that's not being implemented in San Bruno is there have been other jurisdictions that have dedicated full-time law enforcement to this issue. Not in an enforcement role, but in a presence role. Downtown officers in some cities, there's been three or four success stories, well, they're calling them success stories in our county and other jurisdictions that still have these teams employed. And it's basically, none of us like to interact with law enforcement on a regular basis. When you're driving down the street and you see a police officer in your rearview mirror, nobody's comfortable. Well, the same is for homeless individuals. When they're sitting on a park bench in downtown, they don't want to interact with the police multiple times a day, every day. So, the strategy that's been employed by these jurisdictions is to put police officers in areas where there is a, that is frequented by the homeless and has an impact on the community. In all instances, they're partnered with, most of the time, Life Moves or some other type of service provider. What this has done in reaching out to these jurisdictions is it has had an impact. You'll talk to some entities that their downtown area is not frequented by homeless individuals nearly as much, if at all, as it was before they dedicated this personnel. However, where'd they go? They probably went to other parts of the city or they probably pushed them to other jurisdictions. Don't get me wrong, I'd love to push them to another jurisdiction. I just don't know that we have the wherewithal to do that. And our main goal here is truly to help these individuals and find long-term solutions, kicking the can down the road, whether it's within our own city or to another jurisdiction is probably not the most appropriate. There's a question at the bottom of the slide. We're often asked when people who don't understand the complexities of the homeless issues is, what are other entities doing that we're not? And I would suggest to you that the more effective question is, what are we doing that others are not that's resulting in us seeing homeless individuals in our city? Because, you know, we should pride ourselves on being compassionate and providing services and, but we, like I mentioned earlier, we need to recognize that when we do that, people are going to come and use those services. And when they come to use those services, they're going to be where people can see them. And there's just no getting around that. So, these are some potential alternatives, they're not suggestions and they're not listed in any particular order. Again, we're, the city is rich with services for transient individuals. Maybe we take a look at the availability of those services, how they're being provided, where they're being provided, and look at the impact that that's having on the community and evaluate that. I don't have an answer for that, just a suggestion. There are other cities across the state that have implemented enhanced regulations for the sale of alcohol. I'm not saying alcohol is the primary cause for homelessness, but it's a contributing factor. And discounted liquor, the little, small containers of alcohol that are accessible fairly easily and seem to be marketed at the front counters of local liquor stores, probably doesn't help. And there may be a way that we can look into that. I don't have specific answers for that, I don't know what's feasible, I'd have to check with our city attorney to see what's legal before we made any suggestions, but that's an option that other entities have looked at. Incorporate environmental changes, lighting in downtown areas may be enhanced. You know, a lot is made of Posey Park, their homeless individuals seem to be comfortable there, there is some bush and some concrete that allows them a physical barrier, even if they're still visible, there's a physical barrier there that gives them some sense of concealment or protection or that makes them comfortable. And maybe when we move forward with planning projects, look at how we're doing that and maybe make it a situation where those environments don't exist. We talked about police officers in areas where we're seeing these problems. And then, you know, there's always the alternative of identifying a place where we're okay with the homeless to be and letting them know that and monitoring that area on a regular basis. And that's absolutely not a suggestion, it's just an alternative that other entities have done on a formal basis, if you look at Oakland, with, in other entities do on an informal basis on a pretty regularly, regular basis. We have not. You'll see that we regularly evict encampments, whether they're hidden or they're in plain view. When we do that, though, we see an uptick in our transient population in the downtown more visible and may have a different type of impact on the community. So, I promise I'm wrapping up here, I apologize for taking so much of your time tonight, it's kind of a complicated project that 20 minutes will probably not, or half hour will probably not adequately address. But our plan to proceed is to continue enforcing the law, the way we enforce the law, in a fair and equitable manner. Quality of life issues are important, no matter whether you're homeless or not, and if you have an open container or you're intoxicated in public, we're going to enforce that. Continue to work closely with Life Moves and persuade people to provide resources. Explore the possibility of amending local ordinance or adding local ordinance regarding the sale of alcohol. And continue to work with public and private property owners. The eviction process, when we do get those encampments, if they're not on San Bruno public property in San Bruno proper, they can be tough to get done, to address in a timely manner, so we'll continue to work with them closely. So, I'm not sure I provided you with a great deal of, or any solutions at all, but hopefully this is some information that you and the public can use and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the information and for the in-depth report. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Sherry. See Robert at the podium? Can we go ahead and see if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak and then bring it back to council?
Before the chief leaves, can you say anything more about the safe camp concept? Do you have any feel that if we set up a safe camp, might that be a drawing factor that would cause more people of homelessness on at least a temporary basis to move into San Bruno?
Chief? Yes, I think that anytime, I mean, the word gets out outside of San Bruno that there are services available here. And the same word would travel if there was a safe space. Not advocating for or against, I'm just saying that, yes, you would probably see individuals who learn of that safe space want to come to San Bruno and take advantage of that.
Questions or comments from council?
To the chair.
Laura?
First of all, thank you so much for the detailed presentation. And I think, like you said, you need a long, probably an afternoon to go through the work and the commitment and the dedication and all assets, not aspects of the city from police, fire, staff. I know it's a regular issue in every city. You know, ask a San Francisco police officer and he'll tell you they deal with it on a regular basis, on a daily basis. But looking at numbers, and the thing that you brought up is really the homelessness that we're seeing in the streets and the number in San Bruno was 26 in 2017. But the homelessness actually is an issue with people living in cars, people living in RVs, people living in tents, and the numbers county-wide is pretty large. And I hear a number of residents complaining about the increase in RVs or some sort of vehicle if it's parked on, you know, let's say behind Melody Toyota on the streets. So, that's an increase in the city's issues as well as just the homelessness. So, my comment is, the numbers are increasing, although, can we really make sense of these numbers, right? You look at these numbers, South City's got 172 one year and the next year they're down to 55 or they're at seven, it is, it ebbs and flows. As you mentioned in your report, transportation, bringing BART into San Bruno is an increase in the homelessness population in San Bruno. So, I think the report tonight is important because San Bruno is doing a lot and does on a regular basis try to address this problem. And we have, I've seen it firsthand in areas where homeless will live, the encampments, and the brush is getting cut back, we're removing barbecue pits from parks, and we're trying to alleviate the problem. So, I say, kudos, continue on working in the due diligence the city does and the staff does. I very much like the program that we have with Life Moves and I think every individual is a challenge in itself and having the successes that you have is amazing to even get 14 off the street in a year because mental health is a huge problem. And them, the homelessmen wanting to get help themselves is a personal issue and it's a challenging issue and they fight all sorts of challenges within their personal. So, it's an issue and I'm glad to see San Bruno continues it. I just hope that the residents of San Bruno see this presentation, understand this presentation, understand what the city's doing because they are doing a lot. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions from council?
Through the chair.
Irene.
Thank you. I too thank you and Life Move, you guys do a fabulous job and it's not easy. To add on to what Laura said, is there a way we can put this PowerPoint presentation as a direct link on our city website, but looking over it, maybe not the last few slides, but the parts that educate people that say what's legal and not legal and all the different things that you said at mostly the beginning. So, I think, I know it's going to be available at the council meeting if you go on YouTube or if you see it, but this way people could study it a little bit and look at it. So, I think that would be important. And then, the other thing, how long of a contract do we have, Life Moves? I know the chiefs from the county pulled some money and we got an added person, but how long is this going to last and do we need to look at different funding sources to continue their good work?
So, there's, to address your second question, there is an agreement with the county, which we hope is long-term and continues to be renewed with the county. That's great, it just spreads Life Moves staff a little thin. So, what we did last year with your support is we did partner with seven other cities to come up with a substantial amount of one-time monies, grant funds, to add staff. What we're hoping, and it may be wishful thinking, is there's no time limit on when we have to spend those funds, so we're going to keep this relationship until those funds are exhausted. At that point, and again, it may be wishful thinking, we're hoping to go back to the county and show them how successful this was and see if they can dip into the Measure K funds, I believe it is, that they're using to fund this program to maintain our current level of services, but there's no guarantee for that. So, there's no timeframe, it's not a one-year commitment, it's basically based on how efficiently we expend those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Irene. Mike? Please, then, Michael.
Yes, thank you. This is, it's such a difficult subject to really solve, it's almost insoluble at times, but we can try to make things better. And I like the number of other ideas towards the end of your presentation. And so, the next step I'm asking, I guess, the council of, I thought we had a sub, I believe we had a subcommittee on homelessness. And if we do, then I would suggest that they take on the next step, which is looking at how we can make things better by looking, examining the different things that you have in your presentation. So, I guess I'll ask the mayor, I believe there's a subcommittee.
There is, Irene and I had met, that's where we had gotten this with Life Moves and we all sat with staff and was given information on the services that are rendered as far as the individuals that received services, what the police department was doing, but it was more by names and things as such.
Got it. So, I would suggest that we would now open that up to our community, to have a meeting to where we reach out to other individuals that are interested in tackling and helping with the homeless problem. I see online that a lot of people are, they do complain, but they're also trying to figure out, well, what can they do? And I'm hoping that we could provide the forum to start talking about, well, what can the community do? We know what the police can do, we know, but what other assistance can we obtain from our community? So, that's what I would like to see and with the council's support of having a public meeting, a forum, to have our community, I mean, we have a Warriors game tonight, right? That's one thing, and our council meetings aren't generally attended very well anyhow, but having that opportunity for the public to come out to deal with one specific issue and that would be the homeless. So, that's what I'm asking for our subcommittee to look into.
Michael?
Chief, I just wanted to say that I'm always impressed with the work that you and your department do with the resources that you have. So, this was a really great report, very comprehensive, and it's obvious that you are working really hard to address this very difficult issue. So, I just wanted to thank you for that, for the report, for the work that you're doing. And I really appreciated the comment that you said at the end where I really do believe that you're taking a very compassionate approach to this difficult issue. These are people that are down on their luck, some of them are dealing with some very difficult issues, they're dealing with difficult issues themselves. Some of them definitely need assistance even if they don't realize they need our assistance, but you're doing a wonderful job, so thank you.
Just for me, you know, I could see the subcommittee reconvening to see if there is some exploit, but what I worry about is just to have a meeting, to have a meeting to talk. Because as we all hear, and I think the chief said something in this presentation that we don't really have to wrestle with. When I went out three Sundays ago to the train station, because I wanted to see the fountain, is why I went there, I ended up speaking to five of the homeless. We spent about 40 minutes conversing. So, to me, what you find out better is not to tell me what, or for me to tell you what I think I know, it's about going out there and finding out what it truly is. You can speculate, you can believe, but unless you ask, unless you go out firsthand and check with folks, then who are we to sit up here and figure we have the answers? So, that's where you maybe need to start. But ironically, one of the chief's comments was about services. Why were they there? They were there because they were waiting for the church, not, it was a different church that was listed up there, that was bringing food. So, they know on that day, at that time, they come together because they're offering services. So, really, the community needs to have a conversation with itself about, truly, what do you want to do? I get emails and I hear comments about, shut it down. That's why folks are here. Then you have others that say, but we need to be the city with the heart, we should do more. And I want to know how we're going to pay for it. I remember before any of us, I believe, were up here, there was a time that the council tried to take some more proactive approaches that had a little bit of backfire from the community. About, A, is it legal? Two, that the council, then none of us, were being insensitive. But really, what it brought to the chamber was a debate about those that want and those that don't want, and then you had citizenry against each other because they just had not the answer, unfortunately. They just... not the answer unfortunately, they just had an opinion of what they either wanted to do or didn't want to see. So, I think it gets really deep as far as what the community wants to do. And I think it's, you could put folks in a room, but what's really the agenda? What really is legitimate and legal, which I think the chief said needed to go to the city attorney to say, because some folks have, what they've asked to do, I don't know that it's truly, again, being homeless is not a crime. It would be the same thing walking down San Mateo Avenue and seeing somebody eat a sandwich on the curb, because somebody interprets them to be homeless, they can't do it, but any one of us can. Well, that's what the chief's alluding to, people have to be treated equal. They can sit in a park, they can lie in a park, it's completely legal, just like you and I, not at night now, but in the morning. So, it's about treating people equally and following the law. But I think, you know, for some of us, even we don't have the answer, we're all admitting that. So, if we're going to meet, I think we need to come up with some realistic solutions. I think, Irene, I like your idea about the educational aspect, because I think some of that was brought forward, we learned that as well. You know, I think, again, really, the community might have to wrestle with its heart and to say, services will have folks here, and if that's what we want, then that's what we want. But we can't have it both ways unless we're willing to invest resources, staff time, taxpayers' dollars, into something more, housing or something that's substantial. And then, do we want to compete with the county? So, I think we really need to look at that, and budget time is coming up too, so let's see what resources we have available, or enhancements eligible, or can we invest? So, I've rambled a little bit, but I think the subcommittee can look back at some of those things that might be realistic. I think the educational aspect, so people understand, the website, Irene, that you suggested is great, so those are my comments. But again, I want to thank you because I know it was a long report, but I think it was necessary to get to the depth of truly what it is, because it's no real, simple answer. And I know everybody's got a different perspective on what they want to see, but anyway, we'll stop now. Thank you, chief.
So, it sounds like what I did here, though, is, I think we're all in agreement that, I think we continue moving down the path that we're heading. I appreciated that in the presentation, there was a plan to proceed, it talked about continuing with Life Moves, it talked about exploring feasibility of amending local ordinances, enhancing regulations in the sale of alcohol, continue to work with the public and private property owners to prevent, address encampments, and to continue to enforce applicable local and state statutes in an equitable manner. And I think we've all heard is the public knowledge in reaching out to the public. So, there was a comment that I made in my comments, and Irene also did that regarding, getting some sort of version of this PowerPoint on our website. I also think that council member Marty Medina's suggestion regarding a public meeting to open it up for the discussion of homelessness is, I think, is a good idea, because I think not having all the facts and the too much of the commentary by the residents who, and you see it on whether it's a Facebook post or a Nextdoor post, what's the city doing, what's the city doing, and they really just don't have the facts. And so, I think we need to educate them, and I think we need to do a better job of educating them than just having a presentation at a city council meeting. It's difficult for everybody to attend this, this is something that, you know, at times it's 9:30 at night, they have jobs, they've got families, so open it up to a location and a feasibility at a time that makes it maybe more doable for residents who care. And possibly hold the meeting somewhere in the San Mateo downtown area where there is a larger population of the homelessness, so.
The subcommittee can look at it, and I think that's where you get, you partner with folks, with the county, and you look beyond, because again, our community's going to be interested with San Bruno. Life Moves, we have a contract ongoing that will be continued as the chief already indicated, so that is already proceeding, proceeding. So, we can, again, we want to caucus with the city attorney, because again, on the alcohol aspects, don't even know if we can. To me, what the worst thing is, you bring folks together and say, we should do this, yeah, and well, we can't. So, let us get our facts in order too, to make sure what we're giving out is good, true, real information that's legitimate and legal, so we can, the subcommittee can meet again.